It is 6:31. Today is September 17th, 2025. And this is the Board of Directors' regular meeting of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. We do have a quorum. We are missing Jim Thomas. And we'll go to a public hearing. Trophy Club Municipal Utility District One will conduct a public hearing regarding adoption of proposed district rate of .06814 for the 2025 tax year. Citizens comments. Anyone that wants to speak, you can grab a blue sheet over there and sign up. Does anyone want to speak on any agenda item or open set?
What's the agenda item?
Well, if it's not on the agenda and you want to just talk to them.
It's citizens comments. You don't need to fill one out, okay? Just if you want to speak, come up to the podium and tell us your name and address. But before I say that, this is an opportunity for the citizens to address.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay.
We need to open it and close it.
Okay, so we're going to close it now?
Are they speaking to the public hearing?
You're not at the public hearing on the tax rate, are you?
No, no, no. This is on water.
Talking about the buildup of water. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One for the proposed district tax rate of .06814 for the 2025 tax rate. That's where we got him here.
Opened at 31 and closed at 32, 32.
At 6:33. We'll call it.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks. Okay, now we're on citizens comments, okay?
Now we're ready.
Again, you don't need to fill out the sheet, but I need to read this. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action or discuss comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the present or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form. That includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. So just to clarify, this is an opportunity for any citizens to speak, but unless it's an agenda item, we cannot comment on or do anything. Am I right? She's shaking her head, so.
No, our attorney's on the screen.
Then I can just complain, is that right? Okay. I'm David Garrity. I live on Monterey Drive. And we've been here about eight years. And I'm here, as some of you may know, to talk about water filtration. We have a refrigerator with a water filter. And this filter is supposed to last six months. And when we first moved in, it lasted maybe four to five, which is great. And it has a 90-day warranty, so for 50 bucks, replace them. Then all of a sudden, it started to decrease the amount of time that this filter would last. This one lasted six weeks. It went from five months to four months to three months to six weeks. And so I was going to call the company in California that manufactures this filter. And I was going to say, you know, your filters are bad. It's, you know, six weeks. Send me another one under warranty. This one, actually, they sent me under warranty because it lasted less than 90 days, which is what the warranty is. And so anyway, before I did that, I sent a-- is Katie here?
No, sir.
No, none of you are Katie. So I sent an email to Katie at MUD, who I'm sure you all know. And I said, don't you have some kind of a document that talks about Trophy Club and how good the water is? And she sent me that document from 2024. And I said, well, this is great. I'm going to send this to the company in California that manufactures this filter. And, you know, they're going to send me another one. I said, boy, your water's great. We, you know, we don't have any defense for that. So I-- then Ellen and I have had communications. And before I sent that to the people in California, I said, you know, I'm going to put a little something on the Trophy Club Neighborhood Cafe on Facebook. And I did. And I said, is anybody else having a similar problem with their water? And I got a bunch of replies. And I'm really disappointed that more people haven't shown up, because I got a lot of responses. People say, oh, of course, we'll be there. We're having, you know, our showers, we can't clean the glass, and our filters don't last, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not really looking for trouble. But 50 bucks for six weeks on a filter, something's going on with the water. And I don't know what it is. And so I got a bunch of responses off of that and off of thenextdoor.com. And people saying, we agree with you totally. The water is not as clean as it should be. And so I don't have a solution, and I'm hoping that you do. And, you know, we're getting the water lines replaced on Monterey Drive as we speak. And, you know, I don't know if that's going to make the water any cleaner or purer. But a lot of people responded to me and said that their shower glass is impossible to clean. And three or four people said, well, we've had to put in a whole house filtration system for purity. And, you know, you know, $900,000, $1,500, you know, to do that. I don't know that I, I don't know that I can justify doing that if there's something wrong with the water. End of story. That's my story. I'm sticking to it. Would you like to say something?
I'm Gina French, 30th Cypress Court. So moved here from South Lake eight years ago, so I've been here same time as him. And I was really struggling.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'd like, I need to write down your name, and I didn't hear it. Can you please tell me your name again?
Gina French.
Thank you.
And I, there was a worker at our house prior to us buying it. And I'm like, you know, help me out. How did you keep everything so pristine? Because I can't, you know, we had these beautiful Jado faucets and everything. I'm like, how did you keep everything so great? And they go, oh, we never used the mess for that. We just, because the water is so hard here. And we've struggled through it through the years. But I mean, I mean, I use LimeAway. And so we lived in Cincinnati and St. Louis, and we had water softener systems in both those homes. And even though we had water softener systems in St. Louis and Cincinnati, our water was still not as hard as it is here in Trophy Club. And then we came from South Lake, which is just, just a short two-mile move. I'm like, how can our water quality be that different? But I will say, I think you do a lot of things really, really good. And I really appreciate all of you enduring Snowmageddon. We didn't run out of water, okay, like our other towns. So I recognize all the really good things that you guys, you did that for us, and I appreciate that. But I would really like it if our water could be a little bit better in quality. We're actually a lot better. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Could I get the number of Monterey?
105.
105?
21.
21, okay. Did you get that, Pam?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I understand that you've been in touch with Alan, correct, our general manager. And he's probably the best person to go to versus Facebook. I don't think the people in Facebook, it's good that you can ask other people like you did to see who has similar problems. But the town doesn't control the water. The MUD does. We've been here before the town, actually. But Alan is the one to direct any comments to. And you've been in touch with them, is that correct, Alan?
Who? Yes, we've been in communication, yes.
Yeah.
He suggested that we meet. And I said, great. So here I am, meeting.
Yeah, the proper way to get into discussion is to put an agenda item on it. And then we can open the agenda item and discuss your issues and what your problems are.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. That's, we can't, the board can't address it. In fact, I'm probably pushing the limit on it, but.
This is a monthly meeting?
Yes.
So we can put it on the agenda for next month?
Yes, we will put it on future agendas.
How do we do that?
No, we will.
It's already been done.
Okay, so is it, is it the 17th of every month?
No, it's the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday of every month at 6:30?
Yes.
I think that'll be about the 15th of October.
Yeah, and then if you, any--
You mean--
This is September.
This is September.
How many shopping days till Christmas?
She knows.
So third week, third Wednesday of October, 6:30 PM, and it's already on the agenda?
Right. It will be after Lori puts it on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And we, and just, South Lake gets the same source of water as we do.
Well, I'm not certain exactly if they have the same water sources.
Let's keep on topic, guys. Let's say what's the next--
Okay, I just, question, sorry about that, Pam.
That's okay.
I've just been talked to by the attorney. We can't say anything other than that. So next, next month, we'll see you, okay?
This is in the chart?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And we'll put it, we'll put it at the front, so you don't have to sit
through the whole thing. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye. Thanks for slapping me down, Pam. Okay. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll go into reports and updates. Agenda two, monthly staff reports, A, monthly capital improvement projects, B, monthly operations reports, C, monthly finance reports.
Good evening, directors. Capital improvement project updates tonight. We do have the emergency connection that is in design for the potential future emergency connection with the city of South Lake. We also have a wastewater line rehabilitation project currently in design for the rehabilitation and abandonment of certain mains behind the wastewater treatment plant and crossing the golf course. We also have the fiscal year 25 water line replacement underway, excuse me. And as of today, they have the water main installed from Village Trail, almost three-quarters of the way around Alamosa. And they expect to have the majority of that main installed by the end of this week. And the temporary water lines are underway on the installation of Monterey. And they expect to start working on pipe bursting next week on Monterey and installing new service taps on Alamosa to begin the pressure testing and flushing needs to get that line in service. So they're progressing well. We've got a revised schedule today, and we're confident that they're going to be working hard to meet our expectation. So also, the lift station improvement project for numbers two through seven, we do have that complete and wrapped up. And everything is in operation as expected. On page six of the packet, I wanted to go ahead and just draw your attention to the water pumped. That number is incorrect. And so I just wanted to point that out. Our water losses around the 10% mark as typical. So we'll get that number updated between now and the next meeting. And with that, I'll answer any questions you all may have.
On the water pumped, you must have been looking at my notes?
Well, I saw it too. And there was just a difference. We've had some new changes in how we're handling billing with staff. And so they're given a certain amount of days to operations, and the days didn't line up. So there were too many days calculated in there. So we'll get that adjusted between now and next month.
And the other thing is, I was really impressed with the project maps and details.
Good.
It's really impressive.
Gives a little bit more visual of what we're looking at.
It's like, oh, it's going across the golf course. Well, now I know, I know where it's going across the golf course.
I'm glad you like it.
And so that's going to stay in our same easement, that new line that's going in, it's going to be in our, in that same easement.
Correct. So what we're going to probably do is a pipe burst, where essentially they'll dig up both manholes on either side of the golf course. They will run the same, a rod essentially through that existing pipe and connect and break the pipe and pull the new through at the same time.
And did that pipe had a belly in it?
So there were about four spots in it. The overall integrity of the line is fractured enough to where I wanted to go ahead and get a project going on it.
Yeah.
But it's not, there was about four or five areas that were long enough that needed to be repaired, point repairs, where it's more conducive for a pipe burst other than a cure-in-place pipe.
Okay, well, I was, I was just, I was just concerned, I imagine going back P V C, but I was just concerned with the fact of it had a, had a belly in it, and you pipe burst it and pulled it back through that same line, it's still going to have a belly in it.
Depending on the type of pipe and the wall thickness of the pipe, the new pipe that you use, you essentially burst through and you straighten up any kind of bellies. And when I'm talking about bellies, I'm talking about there were 10 to 12-foot sections that had some breaks in it, so we can pull through there.
Yeah, but just a break is one thing. But I mean, when I'm talking, when I'm talking about something that's, you know, maybe 100 foot long, it's got a three or four-foot dip in the middle of it that goes down.
If it was that bad, we would likely open cut and address it.
Okay.
But that's part of the design, is to determine and make sure that what we're expecting is what we're going to bid for construction.
That we don't, that we don't have a problem where we need to go open cut?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Welcome.
On, when you send us the report that Chief gives you, Jason, if there's anything that stands out, if you could, you know, ask him to explain it, like the one I told you about today, the personnel separation and things like that?
Well, any budgeted, any questions related to the town's budget would have to go through the town.
I know, but you, as the general manager, giving it to us, I mean, we shouldn't have five people to call in the town on a thing. You're our contact with the fire. And if you could, you know, if anything stands out, I mean, obviously, people might think something stands out, and it doesn't. But--
Yeah, you can always send the, when you send the report, just send me back an email as specific of what you're looking for, and I'll forward it along to them.
Yeah, because I don't want, you know, everyone on the board to be contacting the town. And I'll just leave it at that. Okay.
Yeah, I also noticed some interesting percentages in there, but--
Yeah, and then there's things that don't have any expenditures.
Yeah. That's a budgeting deal.
Yeah. Okay, anyone have anything else on that agenda?
Nope.
Okay, moving on. We're going to do the consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Agenda three is consider and act to approve the consent agenda, A, August 20th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the consent agenda, A, August 20, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I second.
We have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Harper and a second by Director Toomey. Do I have to ask, did you see anything on that? Okay. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda for August 20th, 2025, show of hands. Okay, it's unanimous with Director Thomas absent. Jim, was he going to be out of town for some reason?
I can't remember exactly where he was going, but he is out of town.
He's like, where's Waldo? Where he's going to be.
He is out of town.
Yeah, okay. Four, agenda nine, four, regular session. Consider an act to adopt resolution number 2025-0917A, as in apple, approving the budget for the fiscal year 2026. Do we have a motion? Bill?
I move to approve resolution number 2025-0917A, Alpha, of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One of Denton and Tarrant Counties, Texas, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Rose, and we have a second by Secretary Treasurer Harper. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
In the budget, as, as noted before, the, all the water assets of the, that used to be in the pit have now been transferred to the district. One of those is the elevated water tank over by the high school, which also has, by my, three different contracts on it for cell, cell transmitters. And their income, annual income is roughly about $100,000 a year. I didn't see that included in our budget, the income from those contracts.
The district does not have any lease agreements with those providers on that elevated storage tower.
But at the same time, in reading the lease agreements, when there is a transfer of an asset, the town is supposed to, as a lease or, supposed to notify the leasees. Has the town done that?
That would be a question for Pam. I'm unaware of anything related to that.
Hi, Pam.
Hi. I was going to suggest that you have a motion and a second, but we're going to be talking, we have an executive session for a transfer of assets. If you want to move the executive session up?
No, I, I think we can move ahead with this item, but we will discuss it in our executive session.
Okay, yes.
Everybody understand that? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of approving the budget for the year 2026, actually, it's 2025 through 2026. Show of hands?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous with Director Thomas absent. Did you have anything on that, Alan? Did you want--
No, sir.
Okay. Regina? Nothing? Not even, how are you doing or anything like that? Okay. We're on agenda number four.
Five.
Five. Oh, you know why? Because I'm looking at the minutes that we just approved. Sorry about that. I do that sometimes. Okay, five. Consider an act to adopt rate order number 2025-0917A, amending water and sewer rates and setting an effective date of October 1st, 2025. Yes, Bill?
I move to approve rate order number 2025-0917Alpha, amending water rates and setting an effective date of October 1st, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Rose. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, we have a second by Director Toomey. Any discussion?
This was, if I'm correct, this is the one that was amended to change the rate from what was in the, hello, staff report to make what was in the rate order that's in the staff--
9897.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So we're doing it with the corrected rate.
No, that, you're talking about a future agenda item. This is--
That's the effluent.
This is the rate structure recommended by--
Chris.
--our rate consultant last month.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
And this is mostly due to the cost increase.
This is a pass-through cost for the city of Fort Worth.
Yep, got it.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of approving resolution 2025-0917Alpha. Show of hands? Unanimous. Again, Director Thomas absent. Agenda six, consider an act to adopt order number 2025-0917B, as in Bravo, amending the fluid rate and setting an effective date of October 1st, 2025. This is the one that--
Yeah.
The only thing that's, there was an error on was the paperwork. The staff report and the agenda are correct. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
A motion to adopt order number 2025-0917B, Bravo, amending the affluent rate order by increasing the cost by 10% from 0.88 per 100,000 gallons to 0.97 per 1,000 gallons and setting an effective date of October 1st, 2025.
Okay, it's not 10 cents, but--
Yeah, 1,000.
You get the picture. You said 0.97. Okay. Okay, everybody understand the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Secretary Treasurer Harper, a second by Vice President Rose. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous. Again, Director Thomas absent. Okay, we're on Agenda seven. Consider an act to adopt order number 2025, oh, excuse me, yeah, 2025-0917C, as in Charlie fixing and living, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, debt service tax rate and operations and maintenance tax rate for 2025 tax year.
I move to adopt order number 2025-0917Charlie, Leving, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, debt service tax rate at .00799 per $100 of taxable value and maintenance tax rate at point--
That's not the total.
That's just--
It's not the total, I know. Maintenance tax rate at .05451 per $100 of taxable value for 2025. The numbers are wrong, both of them.
What's, did you get the right numbers?
Yes.
I, I, did I make, ask a question?
Sure.
You have a second?
I thought the--
Yeah, let me get a second first, then we'll go into discussion.
I'll second then.
Okay, you're seconding. Okay, go ahead. We can--
I, I thought the debt service rate was .00814, or 812, from my memory.
It is.
Okay.
Go back to the motion then. Wait a minute. Seven?
Wait, oh, seven wasn't last year.
Yeah, this is last year's.
Those are last year's numbers?
Well, the, not, not the maintenance rate, but the debt service rate.
799 was--
I, I'm on page--
65.
I'm on page 65 of the packet.
Mm-hmm.
It says .00--
The ONM was .06.
That's your maintenance.
The ONM, I took this right out of the packet.
Correct.
It was .06.
Was the packet's incorrect?
Yes, that number right there is your debt. That is your--
What page? Do you have a page number on that? No.
Page number.
7.1.
Yeah, .00799, I think was last year.
Six. That should be flat, .06. And this one is .0814. How we want to handle the motions on the floor, I can either amend it or correct it.
Correct it.
Correct it.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to amend it.
Pam?
I can delete, we can either--
Here.
The best way to do it is amend it or just correct it?
The motion's been seconded.
Yes, I mean, I think the cleanest way is to not approve that and start over.
Okay.
I'm with you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the table? I see none, all against? Unanimous?
We'll try this again. I move to adopt order number 2025-0917Charlie, Leving, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, debt service tax rate at .00814 per $100 of taxable value and maintenance tax rate at .06 per $100 of taxable value for the year for the 2025 tax year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Rose, and we have a second by Secretary Treasurer Harper. Thanks for watching those numbers, Doug. Okay, any further discussion? I see none, all in favor. Show of hands. Unanimous. Jim Thomas missing. Okay, we're on eight. Consider an act to adopt resolution 2025-0917--
Say what?
B, as in Bravo, approving 2025 tax roll for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District. Should it be D and not B, as in Delta, or is it--
Resolution, resolution.
This is the second resolution.
Because it's a resolution?
It's a resolution, I'm in order, okay.
I look at the dates and the ABCs. Okay, so we're, consider an act to adopt resolution 2025-0917B, as in Bravo, approving 2025 tax roll for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 2025-0917B, a resolution to approve the 2025 tax roll for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. Do I need to state the--
It doesn't--
Certified value?
Yeah.
Certified value of $4,122,422,489. Okay, for a, for a rate of .06814 per $100 of assessed valuation.
Okay.
I haven't, I have, go ahead.
Do I need to keep reading?
Well, I have, I haven't approved one that worked for several years, so it's a little bit longer than what you gave.
Do you want to add to 809 point or
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'll, I'll continue. The amount of tax entered on the certified appraisal rolls and apply to taxable value within the district in a 200809, oh, sorry, $2,0809,018 tax levy. The board hereby approves such appraisal rolls with the amounts of the tax entered and declares that shall, such shall constitute the district's tax roll for 2025 tax year. Period.
Could I just request one? I know, I just want the breakdown of Tarrant County and Denton County to be in the 4122, 422, 489. The Denton County is 3320, 285, 036, and Tarrant is 802, 157, 453. Do you agree with that number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure exactly what the motion looks like.
You want to restate it?
I don't, I don't have, what I have is from previous years, what worked.
Yeah, that here's, you've got old numbers.
So here, I make a, did we get a second on that one?
No, you haven't gotten a second.
We have a second, I make a substitute motion. I move to approve resolution 2025-0917Bravo, approving the 2025 tax roll for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. The Board of Directors approve tax rate of .06814 per $100 of assessed value being imposed on each property included in the certified appraisal rolls for the district for the 2025 tax year totals $2,809,180 tax levy. The board hereby declares that the appraisal rolls with amounts of tax entered shall constitute the district's tax roll for the 2025 tax year. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
What's the total certified value?
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Good. All I can say is that's the motion that's worked for the previous eight years.
Okay, the to, yeah, the total is what Neil said. And I don't think either one will work. I'll second it, call for a vote. All in favor, show of hands?
Aye.
All opposed, none, Jim Thomas missing. Made that more complicated than it was.
It was fun.
I was trying to help.
Yeah. Yours is okay, he just read
What he did last year, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Year before and year before.
Yep.
Fortunately
Okay, nine. Consider an act to approve the amendment to district information form, including notice to purchaser form. Alan, you, go ahead.
I, I move to approve the amendment to district information form, including notice to purchaser form, showing that the most recent rate of district-wide taxes on property located in the district for maintenance and operation purposes is .06000 on each $100 of assessed valuation, and that the most recent rate of district-wide taxes on property located in the district for debt service is .00814 on each $100 of assessed valuation.
Okay, in the, on page 69, that's the link attached to it, it says
One second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Rose, a second by Director Toomey. Okay, go to page 69. Is that, am I looking at something different, or?
That's what he just read.
Yeah, but he said six, a different number, wasn't it?
He said six, zero, zero, zero.
What number did you have in yours? I said
Yeah, there's 60 and there's .084, that's what I've got.
Okay, I thought there was a four in there somewhere.
No.
Okay.
On the end of the 81, 81, 814, you've got a four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I see none, all in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, again Director Thomas Absinthe. Okay, 10. Consider an act regarding annual review of district investment policy and investment strategies, including A, adopt order number 2025-0917D, as in Dog, approving amended and restated investment policy, including district's investment strategies and appointment of investment officers.
I move to adopt order number 2025-0917Delta, approving amended and restated investment policy, including the district's investment strategies and appointment of Alan Formanton and Regina Van Dyke as investment officers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You, you second. We have a motion by Vice President Rose, a second by Secretary Treasurer Harper. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, again Director Thomas Absinthe. Okay, that brings us to 11. Agenda item 11. Consider an act regarding approval of task order agreement with half associates for professional engineering services for replacement of the existing water lines.
Directors, this will be our FY26 water line project, and we are requesting your approval of these engineering services for design, bidding and construction phase services for the replacement of approximately 7,220 linear feet of water lines along and adjacent to Oakmont Drive, Palmetto Court, Creekmere Drive, Creekmere Court, Edgemere Drive, and Edgemere Court as part of the FY2026 capital improvements.
Do it. I move to approve task order agreement with half associates for professional engineering services for the replacement of the existing water lines as part of the FY2026 capital improvement projects at a total cost not to exceed $112,155 and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Vice President Rose, a second by Director Toomey. Anyone have further discussion?
I, I do have a question. In their cover letter, they mentioned that this is regarding another task order that was executed in October 18th, 2018.
Master services agreement we have with them, for engineering services.
This like, is just an addendum on top of that?
It's a supplemental work order, yes, sir.
Okay, just wondered.
And this goes by the same guidelines as far as penalties for over, over the time allotted?
No, so they typically have a, not with this engineering contract, there's no specific guideline. I do have a, a schedule in here that we should be completed with design in roughly March.
Well, I'm just trying to get a guy, like a window of when the engineering is going to be completed.
Looks like we're going to have it completed within, it's like, four months. Scheduled just, may advertise for construction on January 30th, 2026.
Okay, May or?
January 31st.
No, I'm talking about May, by January.
That's, that's the goal.
Okay.
I actually moved, I decreased a month off of their design time this year.
Okay.
One additional question regarding the PVC piping, the C900, what's the estimated life of that piping?
And right now, there's an assumed life cycle of 100 years plus.
Plus.
Any further discussion?
At that point, we will be dust.
You don't know that. You're just speculating. They could come out with something. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Vice President Rose made motion, and
Director Toomey.
Director Toomey made the second, just to summarize. Okay, all in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, again Director Thomas Absinthe. Okay, 12. Consider an act regarding approval of work order agreement with Pipeline Analysis LLC for professional engineering services related to district wastewater collection system.
Directors, as you might recall, the district wastewater collection, collection system was divided into multiple study areas to be performed over an 11-year period. This will be the sixth year of the condition assessment effort, which also coincides with the sanitary sewer overflow initiative executed with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality in September 21 and expires September 2032. This work order includes smoke testing, cleaning, and CCTV of approximately 30,000 linear feet of pipe, and inspection of approximately 112 manholes. This is what we've been doing annually. This is a best management practices for your wastewater collection system, and essentially what we will bring back is further task orders or construction-related items for approval for point repairs, manhole repairs, pipeline replacements, rehabilitation, et cetera.
Do you have a specific area that they're going to do it? I know they did my area.
Yes, if you look down on page
There's a map.
If you look down on page 113, you can see those study areas.
I'm just, like, if anyone's watching it, they, you know, whether it's going to be coming to the neighborhood soon.
See here, it's going to be in the old
What's the original area over there that we're working in now?
Village West.
Village West area, and then there's also portions of Fresh Meadow and Seminole.
Okay. And all the people be notified?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. And just to add on, they did a really good job, they found that one of my neighbors where the pipe wasn't connected, when the house was built in 80s, it was just shoved in, obstructing. She's the only one that lives there, but luckily, there wasn't any problem backups in the house. You have something?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve work order agreement with Pipeline Analysis LLC for professional engineering services related to the district wastewater collection system at a total cost not to exceed $175,562.86 and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents as part of the FY2026 budget.
I'll second.
A motion by Vice President Rose, and a second by Director Toomey. Any further discussion? I see none, all in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, and Director Thomas Absinthe again. Okay, we're on 13. Consider an act to approve purchase of a new 2026 Dodge 1500 from Grapevine Dodge Chrysler Jeep.
Directors, this is a scheduled or planned replacement of an existing half-ton pickup that's in the water department. The existing vehicle has met the useful life of eight years or 80,000 miles. This pricing is provided utilizing buyboard purchasing cooperative contract and is included as part of the FY26 budget you all approved.
Has this got a box that we're taking off?
This is just a regular half-ton pickup, half-ton crew cab pickup.
Who's the, this is the water, you said, right?
Correct.
Make the motion. Sure. Okay, you go ahead.
Motion to approve, we're finishing talking, motion to approve purchase of a 2026 Dodge 1500 from Grapevine Dodge Chrysler Jeep for an amount not to exceed $42,603 and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Secretary Treasurer Harper, and a second by Vice President Rose. Any further discussion? I see none, and one thing, the, the old truck will go into the common Lone Star Auction.
We'll bring it back for surplus at a future date, once the new ones arrive, yes.
How much do you think we can get for it?
I have no idea.
$500.
20 bucks.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Yeah, go ahead.
You have anything?
No, I was just going to say, if you want to bid on that pickup, when we put it out for auction, I want you to abstain from voting.
Okay, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous, with Director Thomas missing. I don't think you really need to abstain from this vote of purchasing, you have to abstain from the salvage.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Abstain from the salvage, I think it'd be prudent, that's what I did.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving into executive session at 7:16, and
You gotta read all that.
Excuse me?
You gotta read it.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to get a tape recorder for this thing. Pursuant to Section 551.071 to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act, or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers on the following matters. A, transfer of district assets. And it is 7, we'll call it 17. Okay, we're back in regular session at 7:49, and we'll consider an act regarding items listed in executive session, which is Agenda 15. Do I have any action on item 15? I see none, so there's no action, executive session, and a transfer of district assets. Item 16, we have
I think you're on mute, if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
We can hear you.
Yeah.
The whole meeting is on mute.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Turned on in the back.
He said he turned it on.
He's doing it right now, there we go.
There you go.
You good now?
We need
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
We start.
We're out of executive session at 7:49, and we're at Agenda number 15. Consider an act regarding items discussed in executive session. Do I have any action on the executive session of transfer of district assets?
No.
I see none, so there's no action on the executive session agenda. Moving on, we're on item 16, items for future agenda, and we have the visitors
Water quality.
Right, do we have anything else?
Hmm?
Nothing. Okay, moving on, next regular meeting is October 15th, 2025, at 6:30, I presume. Anyone have any issues with that?
I will be missing.
Will be missing?
Missing in action again.
Where are you going to be, with Jim Thomas somewhere?
Out on, out on a ship someplace.
Really, cruise?
Yeah.
Okay, so Bill will be missing, and do you know if Jim Thomas is going to be here?
I have no idea at this time.
Can't move it, because we have early voting starting. We need to keep it on the 15th.
Okay, I'm going to be gone the 17th, so it can't be that day, so
We'll just keep it.
Okay, you good, Neil?
I'm good.
Doug?
I'm good.
You guys do a good job.
We will, we sure.
Yeah, before, before we end real quick, and Pam, you can stop me, but I just want to say thanks to the fire chief, Jason, and the police chief, Patrick Arada, for the September 11th presentation, they did a good job. Hopefully, no one forgets that day of 20, 2,977 lives were lost, not including the ones after it from the chemicals they were exposed to, so just wanted to mention that. Okay, we're going to adjourn at 7:52. Meeting adjourned.